Okay, I'll go ahead and call the commission for the twenty-seventh order, roll call please.
Thank you, Chair Lane.
Here.
Commissioner Tonelli.
Here.
Commissioner Sokolov is excused, Commissioner Lamb is absent, Commissioner Lerner.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, good. So, the next item on the agenda is for public comment, and that public comments section is for things that aren't on the agenda, in case somebody wants to talk about something that we might all want to know about, or learn about, or look into for the future. So, I'll go ahead and open the public comment section, and nobody is racing towards the podium, so I'll go ahead and close the public comment and bring it back for the discussion on food events. They were pretty straightforward, I didn't find anything that I said that was, that is dumb enough to replace.
The first thing I remember was that split book we had on the tree issue, and that was correctly.
Yeah, that's right, I got that. And, yeah, I didn't see anything there that was needed to be adjusted.
I didn't either.
Okay.
I move that we accept the amendments from last month, May twenty-third?
On second, Dan.
Move to second, if all of the papers say aye, all right, all right, that's three-oh. And then, we'll go ahead with the public hearing, and we'll start off with the five-four A school master plan update from Sacred Heart School. All right, and we'll start with the staff report, and then go.
Oh, okay.
All right, yeah, everything will do work that same way, so for all of the others of you in the room, we'll go ahead and do it that way and everything. All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. So, tonight, before you is presentation of the two thousand eighteen annual update for Sacred Heart Schools' master plan. Every school within town, private school, I should say, required to come annually and give an update to their master plan. The Sacred Heart Schools' master plan, originally adopted in two thousand one, has broken out in subsequent phases, different implementation of projects. As it relates to the two thousand eighteen update, their master plan update does speak to the topics of land use and circulation, parking, enrollment, future facilities to be developed, updates on historic facilities, if they do exist on the property, heritage trees, as well as the school's use and hours of operation. So, the update presented before you tonight, it summarizes accomplishments in the past year. This did include the voluntary seismic upgrading and remodeling of the school's McGarnie Gymnasium, as well as the demolition of their Seagal Hall, and the construction of the new Academic Arts Building. All of those projects actually were brought forward to the planning commission for separate entitlement requests. You may have some familiarity with the history of those. Important to note, as it relates to enrollment, which is one of the required components of the master plan update, the construction of the new building would not change the school's existing enrollment. Other updates that have occurred within the past year, also considered by the planning commission at a prior meeting, were the addition and some improvements to the Oakwood facility, if you recall, that was the school's onsite retirement facility for some of their nuns that live on the site. An additional component has to do with some safety and security upgrades that the school is implementing. There is a potential for portable security kiosks to be installed at the school. That's still being explored in preliminary phases, that would require to come into the town for permits, should it be formalized. In terms of parking, also as it relates to the construction of that new Academic Arts Building, the construction of that building would not reduce or remove any of the school's existing onsite parking. There are portable classrooms in the form of trailers that are currently on the field. Those are to temporarily house the students while the new building is being built. Also seen by the planning commission a few meetings back for a future study. One of the biggest components of these two annual updates of the master plans are the schools' reporting on their required transportation demand management programs. Each private school has one, or TDM programs. The town will facilitate the third-party consultant of a traffic engineering firm to provide an update on how the school's doing during their caps of their master plan. So, in summary, the results of that third-party consultant study determined that the maximum number of allowable vehicles, which I believe is six thousand for the site, that the current usage was well under that, at about forty-eight hundred vehicles. With all of that, staff does recommend that the planning commission accept the filing of Sacred Heart Schools' two thousand eighteen annual master plan update and TDM monitoring program.
All right, any questions? All right, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for a second.
I almost want to say what she said.
Yeah.
That was very thorough. Here, did you use my notes? So, as we just heard, the McGarnie Gym, we did a seismic, voluntary seismic upgrade, and did a remodel of the interior. That was very successful, came in on budget. We had previously had plans, which I had presented, I think, two years ago, to replace that facility for a whopping forty-four or forty-eight million, forty-eight million dollars.
Yeah.
And cooler heads prevailed, as we continued to look at the possibility of saving that building, and we ended up doing it for four million, instead of forty-eight million, so.
That's a good savings.
Yes, it was great savings, and.
It saved the architecture, too.
Yes, yeah. And what it ended up doing was allowing us to have the same programming that we would have had in the new building. We just didn't incorporate interior circulation and some other ancillary programs. We moved those to the new Academic and Arts Building. So, that was a great success. The next thing that we did was finalize the plans for the Academic and Arts Building, and decommissioned and demolished the Seagal Building. And that has now resulted in a big hole in the ground, where the excavation has occurred. About seventeen hundred truckloads were taken off-site with debris and dirt. With those seventeen hundred truckloads, there was one traffic incident, and that was at the corner of Valparaiso and El Camino, where one of the trucks clipped a traffic light. When that happened, they rerouted the haul-off, which was probably another third of what needed to be done, up Valparaiso to Alameda de Las Bogas, which we always knew we had that as an alternate as well. So, that is on, that has been completed right now. They are installing the structural steel and foundation, and will probably put a roof on in November. Scheduled to be completed in July, and we'll be looking at moving in, and then decommissioning the portables by early August, so that we can have them out of, off-campus by the start of school, which is August twentieth. I'm sorry. It was probably me that made the noise, okay. We, as stated, we're concentrating on safety and security with present-day vision of protecting the campus by doing a pilot program of this kiosk at the front gate. We intend that to not only help us with security, but with vehicle traffic. So, that's another measure that we think people will feel that it's too much of a hassle to come onto campus for these one-off, two-off trips that they continue to do when they want to bring their child their lunch every day, even though we tell them, "Don't do that." They find workarounds to that process, so that'll help the traffic flow on and off-campus as well.
You did a really good job of the traffic management.
Thank you. The Oakwood Retirement Home, they have started to remove the trees that are in the path of the work that will be done to add a couple of rooms at the front of their facility, and that is to allow for visitors and have another office space for another administrator. Their second project of adding a modular facility residence, similar to the one that we already have on campus, is on hold right now. There are disagreements in the actuariales to see how many nuns will actually be around long enough to take advantage of the facility, so they're not sure yet whether they need to add beds. And, so that's on hold. If it were to start, it wouldn't happen before two thousand twenty. As you heard, the traffic demand management, we're nineteen percent under the cap. We started out about two thousand fifteen at thirteen point two-five percent. We had a good showing in two thousand sixteen with twenty-three percent down, and now we're sitting at nineteen. It's going to fluctuate based on the week chosen, the activities that we have going on. It's just trying to be a representative position of what's going on on campus daily. Yes. Right. And the fact that we had construction this year is also an anomaly. We probably had more cars on campus during that time than we had anticipated, so we still continue to see that trend go down. We had an upswing in the faculty and staff members who use car pools, so that helped relieve some of the pressure, and we're going to continue to push that program with our faculty and staff.
When Menlo School gave your presentation, I asked them to check with you about possibility of just making sure the ride share was open to both, the two of you together. Like, you could post, like, maybe somebody over there is coming from a location that nobody else at your school is, but there's one person over there that needs a ride, so I don't know if they've reached out to you or not, but it was the idea, as long as you're in the neighborhood, you might want to just look at that.
Right. Actually, when I, I don't know who from Menlo presented it, it might have been Lauren, who's fairly new, but he's not over the traffic department. I met with their traffic department, and we did pool with their faculty and staff, as well as some other local companies. We did also try with Stanford, but that didn't work out, because the traffic between Atherton and Palo Alto was too great a distance for many of the car pullers. But, again, it's working out little pieces at a time. Enrollment, as you heard, is not going, we do not anticipate increasing. If we were to want to increase the high school, we would do something to the lower school to accommodate that. So, we're committed to keeping within our numbers. As you know, it's not an exact science. It's almost like spitballing and throwing things at the wall. We intend to have a gap usually at the beginning of school. What we didn't intend was last year's enrollment was fairly low for us. It was eleven seventy-two, and that left, like, fourteen, what was that, twenty, twenty-four students lower than our cap, which hurts financially. This year, we're at eleven eighty-one, and eleven eighty-one and eleven eighty-two seem to be our sweet spot at the moment. That leaves enough room that if there are families that transfer into the area last minute, we have some room for them within the cap. So, that's, any questions?
I just had a couple.
Sure.
And you may have already addressed it. With the Academic Arts Building, you had some minor issues with traffic and parking, and I'm wondering what those minor issues were and how they were mitigated.
So, the traffic, I mentioned, that was the only issue.
Was that?
Yes.
The accident thing, yeah, you had to reroute things?
Yes.
That was it?
That was it. There was no, there was no issue with traffic stacking up on Elena, traffic stacking up on Valparaiso. It all went extremely smoothly. The parking, though, was a nightmare for about two weeks. There was a time when students felt it was their constitutional right to park where it was legal to park, off-campus.
I saw that. I drove down there one time, and this kid, there were a bunch of kids walking with their cars, and went, "Is this the way we should be thinking about this?" And I was, I happened to drive at the end a couple of times, right?
Yeah. It was, it was not a fun time. I had, I'd gotten some complaints from neighbors, although, just two, and I ended up helping them out and figuring out ways to make sure that they were comfortable. But, the biggest problem was, there were some students that insisted on parking on Elena, which is a no-parking roadway. However, there aren't enough no-parking signs to have it hold them to the letter of the law. So, they were receiving parking tickets, but they were fighting them, and they were getting tossed. The tickets were getting tossed out, because they weren't meeting the legal requirement. So, like I said, some of the students felt it was their constitutional right to park there. So, what we've done now is we've told all juniors who will be coming up, they're sophomores now, and they're coming up to be juniors, they're going to park behind the Mormon church, along with any of the sophomores who end up getting their driver's licenses, usually between November and May. And then seniors will be the only ones that will park on campus. And we're going to try to leave Park Lane clear, understanding that it's not prohibited by law, and we'll do the best we can to get them to comply. But certainly, the issues with the neighbors, we want to make sure that that's taken care of.
They were parked on both sides of that street.
Yeah.
Now, did you use some parking in order to put temporary buildings in to replace Seagal? Or, I'm trying to remember the original plan when you were planning to demolish the building. Didn't you have some modules coming on campus?
So, we have the portables that are on campus, yes, and they're not in a parking area.
Okay.
They're on a sports field.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how's that plan working out?
That's worked out beautifully. It's like a little portable village. There's twenty portables all in a row, right, and they fit perfectly on this field.
Yeah, they're not disposable really from the street or anything either, they're well-navigated, so.
And they're brown, and so they just, they blend in with the environment. And as far as the plan for parking, the plan has always been to use the back of the Mormon church, which we have a hundred and thirty parking spaces. It's just the students chose not to do it. It was, it was a mini-battle there for a little while. We even had the seniors who thought it was funny for their senior prank to block the juniors from getting on campus after the juniors were given permission to park on campus. And so, they parked in such a way that it blocked all the parking space, blocked all the rows, and so there was a little showdown, and I ended up winning, because I called tow trucks in, and was going to have their cars towed if they didn't move them and park correctly, so it ended up working.
All right, that's all. That sounds like a wonderful week for you.
Yes.
All right, anything else? Any other questions? All right, good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see anybody else to be commenting on this item, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion on action regarding.
I think everything was well presented. I don't have any further questions?
I don't either.
Paul, are you?
I'll go ahead, I can move it. Chair, I move that planning commission accept the filing of the two thousand thirteen annual master plan update and TDM on the green board for Sacred Heart School.
Second.
Move to second, if all of the papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Another miraculous presentation, very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And appreciate the success on the TDM, too, and all the work that is, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tell the announcers you said hello.
We had one lost in the woods today.
Oh, really?
With a walker.
Oh, wow.
We think she was there for a long time before we found her.
Oh, good, good. See you later. All right, what we got here? We got, we have item number four B, consideration of potential adoption of a chapter seventeen zero one, that we acted in municipal code, development agreement adoption procedure. So, let's start with a staff report on this one.
So, the request before you tonight is a consideration of a new ordinance to municipal code pertaining to development agreements, and your planning commission recommendation to the city council on the adoption of such. Just a bit of overview, as you've done with other existing ordinances, anytime an ordinance is amended, or in this case, created, the planning commission, as the recommending body to the council, must review it first and provide a formal recommendation to the city council. So, development agreement ordinance, so what is a development agreement? For those who aren't as familiar with them, they are pretty common in other municipalities, albeit typically with larger, more commercial, industrial, or mixed-use type land uses. They are negotiated contracts between project proponents or private property owners and the public entity that governs the land use for that particular jurisdiction. They set standards and conditions. It's a regulatory tool, I should back that, a development agreement can be used as a regulatory tool to set conditions and standards that would govern the development of a property. They provide some certainty to a developer as to what they can develop, but at the same time, contract that developer to provide that jurisdiction or municipality benefits in exchange for the development on that site. They are most commonly used to memorialize those public benefits that are negotiated between the jurisdiction and the private property owner slash project proponent. So, that summary of what a development agreement is. What the proposed ordinance does is set a process for the town of Atherton, should the town ever want to enter into a development agreement with a private proponent. And with other ordinances, it sets forth that procedure. It gives the purpose and applicability, when can a development agreement be used, how a development agreement would need to submit an application, so to speak, what the process would be when that application has been submitted, in terms of planning commission review, and ultimately, city council action. There's findings that are incorporated that would need to be made by the city council before the development agreement becomes effective. And then ultimately, if the council does approve a development agreement, they do get reported in the county office, so down in San Mateo County Recorder's Office. Typically, and this ordinance does as well, a development agreement will have a clause in there for an annual review to make sure that whatever the conditions or specifications that were set forth in that individual development agreement are, have been being met in the specific timeframe that they are delineated within the individual agreement. It also will give an outline of a process should that development agreement, for whatever the reason may be, be revoked. When could Atherton potentially use a development agreement? It could be a development agreement with a school, private school, that's privately owned. Utilization of publicly-owned lands, there's not a lot, but there are some, are some examples. A large subdivision, we don't anticipate any, but there could be a situation when, for example, individual purchases up many coterminous properties and wants to readjust them and re-subdivide them and create larger development potential, perhaps, than the amount of parcels that were originally there. So, there's just some examples of potential scenarios that could come forth in the town, and having the development agreement, having an development, a development agreement ordinance is just another tool for the town to use in the processing of such applications.
So, that was the question I had about the criteria for requesting it. So, I wasn't clear at what level it kicks in. So, it's like, so I'm five acre property.
That was an issue.
Yeah, right, yeah. Although it's defined, who does it, it doesn't say why I couldn't, why everybody couldn't. So, you know, so, there must be a condition in your, in your thinking that triggers the need for, or the preference for this, but I couldn't find it in this.
I could not figure that out, what the very first step is that triggers it.
Right. I mean, so, I mean, if I have a one acre property, I want to make sure that, you know, that it's documented. Why wouldn't I ask this?
Well, the purpose of the development agreement would be a give and take. So, if you had a one acre property that you wanted to develop outside, I would say, and this is a hypothetical scenario, so stop me if any of this wouldn't make sense, but this is what I would envision in this scenario that you just presented. Joe Smith wants to develop his one acre property, and he wants to do something outside of the standard requirements that the adopted municipal code regulations specify. The town may want to consider that, in exchange from Joe Smith, some other overarching public benefit that the entire community could enjoy. And the tool to memorialize that would be, could be, through the creation of a development agreement.
So, it sounds like, in general, it would be instigated by, or originated by the town, right?
By applicant, usually. It would be, somebody who wishes, so, so there's, there's a hypothetical, and there's what would actually happen.
Okay.
So, what would actually happen is, somebody would, it would be a larger parcel, or at a school, they want to do something, and it's into the town, "Hey, we want to do this, we need to freeze that zoning in place, because we don't want you guys changing your minds in a year or whatever, we want to do that." And it's really just a different mechanism for the town to use to accomplish the same thing. There's some problems with the existing procedures, and that's why a lot of these municipalities now use development agreements. It really wouldn't be somebody with a one acre parcel trying to do something, we were divided into, you know, quarter acres or parcels.
Good, go ahead.
So, it really would be, in theory, it's any applicant coming and saying, "I want to do this." How far it got down the road would really depend on legitimacy of that application.
It sounds to me that it's another layer of protection for the town, would that be a?
Yeah, it is, in some ways. I think that as, there are things that municipalities have wanted to do. They're great, the municipalities, that they can't do legally. So, for example, zoning is not frozen in place. So, you could, you could come and say, you know, let's say, it's difficult in this town, because there's so many limited contexts in which this would actually apply. But let's say the town owned ten acres, and a developer came and said, "Look, I really want to do something great. I'm going to build you a brand-new town hall, and in exchange, you're going to, you know, let me work with me to develop this. We're going to do something great, residential, and block the tracks," whatever it is. It's a win-win, everybody's happy, and we want to do it. The developer, right now, doesn't have much of an incentive, because, let's say the town gets annoyed about it, and there's an election, and they change the council. That brand-new council, mid-project, can change the zoning, so they can't do it anymore. And that's what was happening, huge developments that took multiple years. All it took was a group of citizens to come in, change the political culture, and boom, all of a sudden, someone you've been working for for years is gone. So, in that way, it does give certainty to the developer, and it gives the town something they can stand behind. It freezes the zoning in place, that agreement is valid in the time it's signed. The council comes in, anything changes, they can't undo that. It sort of governs above the zoning, it freezes it in place. The other thing that happens is, the town, with these, do these things, the developer says, "Guys, we're going to bring votes, and we're going to maybe repudiate all this one thing, we're going to break the law, whatever it is that the town makes up to its own power to make a new way." The problem is, the timing of that had to be much later, you couldn't start, and now, right now, you can't take these until later in the process. So, if it's a contractually agreed upon thing, we can get those upfront, we can lock those in, we can say what it's going to be. It just gives certainty to both parties, and so it is an improvement over a lot of legal problems that people were seeing with some of these other things. I don't think it's something that will be used a lot in Atherton, I just frankly, there's not that much room for it. And I don't think what we're talking about are, you know, the, I don't think the character of the neighborhoods are going to change, because the city council would still agree to any of these. I mean, it's a contract that's entered into by the council, and it's a public forum, and everybody gets to vet it, so it's still, still public, it's out there, it's just like any other consideration you would have. It can be enforced by the public, so if there's an agreement that's entered into, and the neighbors are like, "You promised us that you'd have a TDM plan." There's a TDM plan that's happening, they can actually go to court and sue to enforce that, so it's sort of protectable. This is the other thing. Oh, and it has to be consistent with the general plan.
Okay.
I love, so there's a layer of protection here. So, I think what I want to stress is, in considering this, it's a different procedure to get to something that you could already get to. It doesn't create opportunity for things that are not, you know, we're not talking about shopping malls around here. It's still consistent with the general plan.
And we're not talking about, so, I'm thinking about things where somebody would say, "What's our biggest, what's our biggest parcel in the town?"
Oh, it's that, it's that really long one that has the multiple houses on it, off of Atherton Avenue. I think that's the largest parcel.
I'm just thinking about, somebody has a ten acre property, and they donate to the city, and somebody says, "Okay, well, I donated, but my son's still..." And somebody says, okay, well, I donated, but my son still needs a property. So I like a one acre that's sliced off and you guys can make a park of it or something like that. Something along those lines I could see, but the other use that I was questioning was since there wasn't a bottom to it, whether or not it would just be used as a way to, to be a safety net for just a regular person. Like, let's say somebody came and says, okay, I want to build a property, but rather than having a mother-in-law unit, I want to include it in the corner of my house. So rather than being separate, I want it to be included. And that works on this property better because it's less intrusive to neighbors because I don't have to have somebody back. So then they come in with one of the requests for this, for that usage. And it makes sort of sense, but it doesn't really conform with the way we would normally approve stuff.
I don't think it's going to be used for those sort of things.
Okay. All right. That's the only thing I was looking at here is if it were not going to be used properly, but there is no restriction to who could ask for it. So if we get the authorization to recommend or not recommend, then we could stop up here and say, we're not recommending this goes into this plan, even if the property owner wanted it. So it's not an automatic thing. If they ask for it, we give it, correct?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. Well, then as long as we can control that part of it, then I was more comfortable with mine.
I think it's more for if you're thinking about, you know, let's say a school and purely, let's say a school wants to improve something on this property. Let's say some of the town is really, like, that would be great. Maybe it would mitigate noise to the neighbors, whatever it is. If the school, there are issues, you know, they would have a conditional use permit and is it zoned for that? And so it would be a way to say, look, we're going to put this $50 million into improving something because it's going to freeze the zoning. We're going to do this in a format that works better for both parties.
So this could be used on a Lily Field, for example.
Yeah.
That would have been a natural use.
Yeah, they're going to develop that and in exchange, yeah.
That would be the most clear usage of it that I can remember of the time I've been here.
Yeah, that's right.
Because we wanted to make sure they were performing and they were, they had restrictions on certain things. So they wanted to make sure that we didn't change their mind.
Yeah, yeah. And it really is standard in the state to have the annual review go right into it. Most of them do that. And that is because, and if you think about it, a lot of times in this town, it doesn't happen. You agree to something, you go down the process, you get it, and we never hear or see the whole thing again. This really does envision continued monitoring of that to make sure whatever promises were made are actually enforced.
Right. So there's a walking back. There still is a walking back.
Maintaining it. Yeah. So I think something that we feel like is a tool for the town and not a liability.
Why hasn't there been a policy for, that we thought it needed?
Well, it's a good thing. It really gained, I don't know how, whether or not the articles about it, you know, are from 2012, 2009. And it's sort of, as the law has evolved on this and created these problems that, you know, these hurdles, if you will, you don't have a vested interest until this point.
I think a lot of it too, just regionally, is kicked up with more infill development in the past, you know, decade or so, where trying to create in existing space and that can be sometimes complex. And so this is a good tool for those jurisdictions to have available for them.
What are the negatives of this? Why would we not want it in place? Is there anything that comes to mind from your experiences?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking through the mess, that it would be sort of well-intended misuse.
Yeah.
And our recommendation tonight would be to the council.
They'll get in the house and they'll talk about it. Yeah, I don't think we see it as creating any loopholes that somebody can jump through or a shortcut.
Are the two of you making the presentation to the council?
Probably would be Lisa, unless she asks me to come up.
And it was actually drafted by Bill, so he'd probably be, and he.
The ordinance. The ordinance was drafted by Bill.
So it wouldn't create any loopholes at the same time. It's not really creating an unnecessary layer.
No, it's just a different half.
Okay.
In my opinion.
I agree.
Yeah, it felt like parallel planning to me, but I understand what the usage is. It seemed like, it seemed like there's nothing parallel planning, but I, you know, here's what, here's the trigger words that made me feel like, yeah, negotiated, blah, 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 you know, rather than agreed to. So there were, there were some things in there that were trigger words for me that sounded like there was a.
Were you, do you have one of those?
Yeah, I remember reading it. Maybe it was in the summer, maybe it was in the, maybe it was in the over year. I just remember the word negotiation popping up in my head going like, you know, I, an agreement's one thing, but I didn't want to have the word negotiate. I need to make sure I didn't see it in there.
I think we can do a search, see if.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't see it. I don't see it. I think it was probably in the over year.
I like the statement in here that says neither the town nor the applicant is required to enter into a development agreement and does not circumvent the traditional development program. That's a good summary, I think.
Okay, I'm okay. Yeah. All right. I just, I just didn't want to have this other layer of planning that was going on over planning.
Yeah.
Right. So, yeah, sure, go ahead. I move that the planning commission recommends the city council adopt the ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the Town of Atherton, Adopting a Zoning Ordinance Amendment, Establishing the Development Agreement Adoption Procedure under Chapter 17.07 of the Atherton Municipal Code.
I'll second. All who pay, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. So that's the three numbers. All right. Brand new business. I have a 5A discussion about the general plans update amendment to the community's safety element.
Thank you, Chair. Before I get into the overview, just to note, post-packet distribution, I was able to get our mapping consultants to prepare a draft community safety diagram. So a copy was left for each commissioner, for members of the board. So overview, community safety element. So town is undergoing comprehensive update to our general plan, less the housing element. Thus far, the commission has had discussion on the updates for our land use element and open space and conservation elements. So this will be your third element that you would be considering again in study session format. Just an overview for whomever may be watching at home. In terms of the process, what staff's intending to do is bring forth each element to the commission in a discussion format. Following that, a community-wide meeting will be held. Following that, the items would come back to the commission for formal consideration in conjunction with the required environmental review under the provisions of California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA, which are required anytime you do a comprehensive update to a general plan under the OPR Office of Planning and Research State Guidelines. So the technicalities of it. Now diving into the details of a community safety element and of itself. These elements are intended to address both natural and man-made risks to a community. Beyond just identifying those risks, the element should also address the potential short-term and long-term ways to mitigate such risks. What kind of risks? Things such as fires, floods, droughts, earthquakes, landslides, climate change. These are all of the natural type of hazards a community safety element will address. Some of the quote man-made risks have to do with hazardous spills, crime reduction, emergency operations and things of that nature. This element ties in most directly to the land use actually and open space and conservation elements, the two that you, the commission has already reviewed. This element has sort of an additional tier of review that's required by the state. Beyond, of course, the planning commission reviewing it as a recommending body to the city council. Before you get to those steps, jurisdictions actually are required to have these administrative draft safety elements reviewed by two state departments for purposes of Atherton. Our, the state geological survey department as well as the emergency services department. So prior to this coming forward to you formally, we may have comments on the element from those two state agencies that I just mentioned. And those comments would need to be integrated into a revised draft. So what does the community safety element have that our old element didn't? There's been some updates since 2002 when the original element was updated in terms of the requirements by the state, mandates what every jurisdiction in California needs to have. You need to identify the risks and the policies of mitigation, like I mentioned before. Specificity on slope instability related to mudslides and landslides. A lot of seismically induced type factors, rupture, ground failure, tsunami. We don't have water presence in Atherton, but tsunami still would be something that we need to address. Other geologic type hazards. Flooding is something that needs to be identified with goals and policies to support and minimize its risk. A pertinent one has to do with wildland and urban fires as well. Policies need to be addressed with that. Also, mention the tie-in to the land use and open space and conservation element. So you need to factor in the physical environment here in Atherton. Thickly wooded environment, that goal gets used a lot, that language, so that needs to be tied in as well. And then at the end of the day, all of those man-made or natural risks should be mapped on the diagram, on a diagram. The draft that's presented before you tonight, we'll still be working on the fine tuning of this element. If you put too many of those elements on one graphic, I think it can get a little hard to interpret, especially the dam inundation. You know, I noticed that this draft does not have that. We will be coming back to you with a graphic that would have that. I'm presuming because it's going to probably cover a large part of Atherton and the shading and the coloring. We need to figure out the best way to visually represent that with our mapping consultants. So the policies that were, are, are proposed as new policies, you'll see in the draft presented to you, should be noted in italicized. The overall approach that we took in doing that was to review all existing town adopted documents, such as our climate action plan, townwide drainage study, our emergency operation plan and hazard mitigation plan, as well as other documents like our disaster mitigation strategies document and make sure that all of those purposes and specificities are accurately represented here in the general plan. We as staff sat down with police department, fire department, as well as our public works department to make sure that all of their purview, primary concerns were adequately addressed in terms of policy, goals and policies in the general plan. And the draft before you tonight gave their preliminary stamp of approval that it did. So with that, happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
So I, as you were talking about, things that were man-made. And I don't know if it fits this plan. So one of them would be traffic unrest during an accident or an incident. So it's hard to get out of a lot of places here. And if there were an emergency of some type, you know, Middlefield, Middlefield has an emergency every day at 4:30. So here are things, you know, I know personally, it's hard to get out on Tremontina and the Middlefield. So I don't know if that would go in here or not, but it would be a factor on that day. The other was the terrorists or some kind of criminal activity. A lot of the high dollar legal here that potentially, you know, are artists. So I don't, I don't know if that's, that would be in this report either, but you know, you know. Just, you could call it police action activity of some type. But anyway, those are two things I don't know.
Okay. Looks like it would fit in the emergency operations. Because it describes that jurisdictions will manage and coordinate and respond to emergency situations. It's certainly relevant.
Yeah, I kind of squeezed it in there, but I didn't notice. All right. So that's all, that's all I know. It seems very thorough. It's probably more thorough than anybody will ever read, by the way.
Right. I agree with Eric as far as being clear on some of the things you brought up. I think the part of the town that's greatest at risk is west of Alameda. The, you know, it's mentioned in Walsh Road, the old reservoir area. That's just from a federal standpoint, from evacuation standpoint. And I'm wondering if, and maybe I missed something, if there needs to be any kind of policy for, like, public information to the residents to make sure that they're informed, not just during an event, but prior to an event of.
Of emergency accidents.
All that stuff, all the pertinent emergency information, especially in the areas that are at risk. I mean, I live close to El Camino and 101, so for us, it's pretty clear cut. But we're getting out of deadly areas and knowing exactly where to go in an emergency. And just in light of the wildfires in Sonoma County last year, you heard people, two in the morning, there's something, so you just got to get out now. And you look outside and it's smoke and dark, you know, you can see five feet in front of you, you don't know where to go. You got to make a U-turn because there's flames. I know that's an extreme example, but I do think there needs to be some sort of public information element to make sure that residents are informed before anything happens.
There is a, yeah. I don't know a ton about it, but I have been informed by the police chief when we had our sit-down going through this. And I can certainly report back on more specificity, but the overview, there is a town based volunteer group.
Oh, that's in here, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so I think they might be a good tool for us to go back to, to address your point in terms of just the dissemination of this base information to the town, the just in case.
And I know each neighborhood has their search team too, the community emergency response team.
Yeah, I got that bag in my garage.
Yeah, I got it somewhere.
I've got it right there. Well, I don't know what I'm going to do, but I'm thinking, grab a bag and go.
Well, my wife is part of the team, so.
I got a janky garbage bag in the back with an I D supply.
Okay, okay, good.
All right. And there you go. We don't have to take action on this right now. We just get you some idea.
Yes, that's great. And so all, as I've done with the other elements, all the commission direction that we've received, what our intention is to, what our intention to do is when we come forth at the first community meeting, those revisions would be integrated in that next round of administrative draft and then ultimately come back to you again for formal consideration. Hopefully we'll be able to distinguish, here's what you said at your study sessions and here's what we heard in the community. So here's a revised document that encompasses all of that.
One thing I thought was odd, it's not for our discussion, it's all part of the emergency policy. But the secondary evacuation road, Walsh Road, is a reservoir road of the Cal. But it's locked. So I don't know how the powers who be decide how that gets accessed in an emergency when nobody can get there to open it up or it was remote controlled. So I know that's not for our discussion. I was reading that going, well, that's not going to help.
Alex, you got a very big truck. All right, just for the record, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. There was no one here for IM4B, by the way. So I'll just officially make sure that if there's anyone here talking IM4B or 458, we open up public hearing and I'm going to, there's no one in the room. And it hasn't been since the first, since 4A. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back for the, for the next, no other comments of 5A. You can be, right?
Correct.
All right. Okay. I have six commission reports. I don't have anything. You know, just a question. You know, back in the day when I was on the big league funding missions, we used to go to the commissioners' blue plot things. And you'd actually learn things about, you'd learn about new planning stuff and you would connect with other planning people and things like. So I've been, what am I, six years or something like that? Maybe, you know, I've never done one. All right. So I don't know if that would be helpful to the group or not, but it's, I remember, well, but that's when I was doing like 60 acres and, you know, 500 unit things and you had all kinds of stuff that you didn't know about. So it doesn't really fit us as much, but if there were a local one, that wasn't like a trip to Hawaii or anything.
Sure, absolutely. Okay.
I mean, I went to one in Hayward once, so that kind of thing. So, you know, it could, it's just something, just to get us out there. It also could be useful just in terms of connecting you with other communities.
Sure. We certainly just, I can broaden out my list so I'm informed on those types of workshops or studies and I can share that with all of you.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, you know, we have a, we have a discussion on tree density and, you know, or secondary units and. or secondary units and things that are relevant. And I, I remember that as a young planning commissioner, that was interesting. I don't know, but as an old planning commissioner, it's going to be very interesting. I was, I was 30 when I went to a membership. That's, oh man, that's a long time. You're running the horse a buggy. All right, but you still had R1 then, though. All right, so, and let's see, staff update, item seven, staff report.
Just noting that we may potentially be canceling the July meeting and we'll let the commission and public know via cancellation, cancellation agenda by next week.
Okay, cool. All right, then I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, moved.
I'll second it.
Move the secondment, all the papers say aye. The task, the task...